Hi, Van calls me in back order. Next up are ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First one is Bill seventeen dash sixteen, second. Or did we pass that? Okay, I had to set, I'm sorry. Seventeen dash fifteen, second reading, which is it will be ordinance twenty-four seventeen. And it is an ordinance approving a petition to establish village of Green Valley, community improvement district. Second reading, bill twenty-four seventeen.
Yeah, I move that we accept Bill B seventeen dash fifteen for a second reading. Uh, bringing it back and be ordinance twenty-four seventeen.
As motion, Alderman West to approve Bill C seventeen dash sixteen for a second reading, making ordinance twenty-four seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman. Headley. Any discussion? Say no, no, I purposefully say aye. All opposed, same sign?
No.
Arnold?
No.
Coleman?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Baman?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
West?
Um, yes.
Five to one, Mayor. Uh, next ordinance is Bill seventeen dash sixteen. It will be, it's a second reading, it will be ordinance two-four-one-eight. Which is an ordinance to establish the city of Green Valley, Missouri's annual tax levies for two thousand seventeen calendar year for general municipal government operations, the retirement of general obligation debt, park maintenance, and public health purposes. Ordinance two-four-one-eight.
Yeah, I move that we accept Bill B seventeen dash sixteen for a second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four eighteen.
I vote for Alderman West to approve Bill B seventeen dash sixteen for a second reading, making ordinance twenty-four eighteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Samuel McHeadley. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, we discussed at this time last year, what's the deadline for this being approved? I know we have the state statute.
It has to reach Jackson County by October first.
By October first. We need to start putting this on our calendar. I, I run across some difficulties in reviewing some things in the past year. Then when we talked about this a year ago, we talked about possibly lowering the tax rate. Uh, there was discussion also about, uh, a review of the water sewer rates, which might be more economic, uh, to our citizens out there to give them a, a possible reduction in water rates. So we, we forebade going and reducing our tax levy, because we saw a significant increase there. And we had a significant surplus that was supposed to be in the, uh, budget that hadn't, hasn't been addressed as far as what we were gonna do with that, uh, to reserves or whatever. Uh, not having seen that water rate study, it makes it difficult to continue to leave the tax levy at, at this rate without a discussion of lowering it, uh, because we haven't seen that water rate study to review and, and do the better for, for our citizens out there. You put me in a situation where I know by statute we have to approve this and get it to, to the state by October one. And we're stuck with, uh, some undesirable situations. So, um, I know we'll be discussing these issues in the near future. But it just, it causes a little frustration when we get to this point and some of the stuff hasn't been done. So we can make an informed decision.
Doesn't the water and sewer rates, can't they be changed independently of this?
Yeah, we do have, and we do have a completed rate study. Um, we have not gone over it, as you mentioned. Uh, it was gonna be part of the budget discussions this year. It took longer than we anticipated to get it back just because, um, the idea of including an industrial rate, and we pulled it out whenever we were going through the whole scout, uh, process. Once the rate study was completed, the initial rate study came back that we should increase our water and sewer rates. I knew that wouldn't be acceptable to the board or to the citizens. And so we worked with that, with our consultant, to try and figure out, okay, what assumptions did they make that led to an increase? Uh, we ironed out those, those issues. But, um, ultimately, the recommendation will be to leave those, those water rates, uh, level just because we have several projects on the horizon that we need to be, uh, saving for. Um, just, uh, again, we felt like budget would be the best time to discuss that. I've visited with the mayor once the, the rate study was back in. And, uh, it, it seemed like, you know, in, in the middle of the year might be an odd time to do it. As it relates to the general fund, um, the setting of the levy, Kathy, when do we get these, uh, numbers from Jackson County?
We get the numbers from Jackson County around the end of July. And then you have to have a public hearing, and you have to advertise ten days prior to that public hearing. So it's, it's pretty crunched in there from when we get the numbers to where we can. Can you go forward?
About the latest that we could, you know, so the, the schedule that you have right now is a result of, uh, us getting numbers, you know, running it through our system, starting the budget process to see, you know, what our forecasted, uh, tax revenues are gonna be. And then as soon as we have that answer, we get it to you. We could probably delay it two more weeks to a little bit more discussion. But then you're up against, you know, that October first deadline. So the idea is to get it to the board earlier than, uh, than later and where the board is, is forced to approve something rather than have, uh, additional discussion.
Like ideally, to your point earlier, Dale, you, you think we had these conversations last year and the year before about just period of timing of trying to do the budget as part of this process? But it's almost as if the timing doesn't allow you to do that, because you don't, Jackson County could be like getting us the numbers. So, I don't know how you solve that, but...
Well, and I, and I agree with you, solving that is, we're up against other people setting deadlines for us. But, and I, I, I don't want, I'm a later on staff, but not having what you just said tonight. A week, two, two ago when we were first talking about setting this levy, that we're not gonna be able to lower water rates as we talked about a year ago, when we were considering a sale, a, a reduction in the taxes because we had a significant increase then. If that increased again this year, if it increases the last number of years. And so without, the absence of that information, it's hard to make that decision to, to try and give back to our citizens and be more prudent with the funds that were given by them.
Can I ask a silly question? Okay, with all the flooding and natural things that have been going and where our water comes from, is there gonna be... See, I was worried about more charges to be sure that the water was good for us to drink. Because it's been crazy and all of it, all over the world.
Yeah, I, we don't anticipate any, you know, emergency rate increases or anything like that? We have steady supplies of water and, uh, both from independent contract. Alderman Arnold, you mentioned we've had increases the last several years. Were you talking about water and sewer or...?
No, on, on our, on our levy, since, since the downturn in oh-eight and nine, we've saw increases annually in our tax base because of development and...
Okay, valuation.
Evaluations coming up and so forth. And, uh...
Yeah, and it's just...
There was, there was strong consideration about lowering the levy last year. And it was put off because we were gonna possibly see it done with the water bills because we saw an opportunity there that might be more, uh, recognized by the citizens because there were things that were possibly going on in the tax levies that would negate anything and took off of the tax levy on our, our tax levy. So people wouldn't actually have saw a reduction with this taxes for the, uh, library and other situations. So, uh... We'll just have to talk more in the future to try and keep sure we're being, giving as much information as possible.
I mean, I think we, I mean, you know, we did talk to the water rate, I think, before, you know. We do see more bang for our bucks with the water sewer rates, if there is some way we could...
And you were the one that made that comment.
I know, and I thought we were gonna lower it, it was just, what, nine million dollar water tower run we have to build is...
About eight million, yeah.
Eight million dollars. Eight million dollar elevator cable run we have to build in the next, what, six years?
Right, come on.
It was kinda kicking us in the tail. I mean, I guess, I'm not, I mean, I guess we could always still lower rates and just not have a larger surplus to go towards that tank, but then you're gonna be issuing more debt.
Correct, you're gonna issue more debt.
Down the line, so it's kinda, you know, it's a trade-off. I mean, we could lower water sewer rates, but then we're not putting money back at that tank, and then we're gonna be issuing debt for that, that tank. So I kinda mean it.
This is also, we could have discussed that because right now, people who live here are paying the higher water rates and paying the higher tax fees and so forth because, uh, we planned all this future growth. And so they have to pick it up to those people living here. Now we got a water tower we're talking about gonna be needing. And the, uh, we're making the people now pay, continue to pay higher water bills so we can put money in reserves so we don't have to get too much debt. Okay, we're gonna get the debt because of future people coming to our community, because that's why we're gonna need the larger, the water tower. Why not have the debt at the other end so the people that are forcing to have the water tower are paying part of the debt as opposed to the people that are here now paying debt up front for people that are coming in behind them?
That's a strategy the board could choose, yeah, absolutely.
How are, how are, I mean, let's kind of get off this a little bit, but how are tap rates, I mean, compared to everybody else right now?
Um, I mean, our tap rates are relatively competitive. I, I think we're actually probably in the lower fifty percent. I know that, I, I mean, if you go to Blue Springs, Lee Summit, um, actually, Blue Springs may be similar to us. I, I know Lee Summit has quite a mu, quite a bit higher tap rates. Um, when I first started as community development director, our tap rates were very little. And we went through a process of increasing, you know, for these commercial taps that, that are coming in. Um, some of them, I wanna say they were paying maybe six thousand dollars for a two-inch meter, whereas now a two-inch meter tap is twenty-six thousand. And it's, it's based off of, you know, what the market demands that they, they pay for a tap. And so we try to closely align with other communities that way. That doesn't become, um, an issue to having development coming to town. But also so the, uh, existing residents, the folks that are here right now, aren't picking up the tab.
Might get those numbers ironed out before we start talking budget on tap rates. I mean, that might be something we have to look at. So if we can...
Well, I mean, the tap rates are, I, I think the tap rates are, are, they are competitive. But if you want us to look, uh, we'll take another look at it.
Let me take, I mean, I wanna make sure we're competitive and we're not just telling ourselves...
I know we raised most of those tap rates because we were so much lower than everybody else. And we weren't bringing in the money that we needed to, to cover some of the debt load that we had for the new water tower and the water mains and stuff that we put in for this pandemic growth and tanks and so forth. So they were, they were, they were increased to be more in line with the neighboring communities and...
But since we've ra, but since we raised them, everyone else may raise theirs again, that's...
But I've also heard from some developers and individual builders that, that, uh, that's part reason that, that they drew back just a little bit in, in building in our community because those rates had gone up. And it was a significant jump when we did that. And, uh, some communities, uh, gave them, uh, kind of lottery draw, you know, produced a, a no tax fee to get a certain amount of development going. And Old Grove's done it, Leder's done it, you know, to try and get, spawn. People are getting back into their communities and start building. I, I don't know if that's something we wanna look at because we still have debt to pay if we start giving away the service without collecting the money for the, to pay the debt. It puts us in another situation, who's gonna pay the debt?
Then you're putting that right back on the system.
Exactly.
Let me take off, um, the tax levy.
I'm a little concerned. I mean, I appreciate your sentiments about this deal, but the levy rate assigned to the increased valuations is a higher amount of tax that the citizens are paying. In, in any way you slice it. So, having a tax increase go through without, and there are times when levy rates need to be adjusted up. There are times when taxes need to be increased and, and things like that. Usually, those things are accompanied with a profound amount of discussion and detail and sound reasoning and back, backup of why you're having to do that. So, I'm not going to vote in favor of this levy rate tonight just because we haven't had the chance to go through that. And if, if one option to, to the solution of the timing concerns of when we get our information and when we have to act on this, to have additional meetings dedicated to those efforts and those topics. Happy to attend those if we need to. You know, whatever we have to do to try to either be as prudent as we can be or, or as transparent as we can be without almost blindly passing a tax increase. If this appears to be, that's something we'll struggle with. Hang on.
Anyone have anything?
If we, if we don't pass this, there, we, we have to do something before October...
It has to be Jackson County by October first. If you don't get it there, they can prevent you from collecting any property tax. If it's not there on time that's more than we're gonna accept.
So if you, if you, if you chose not to, um, pass this, we would have to get back together to come up with a rate to pass before October the first.
Right.
Or you could come up with that rate tonight, I mean...
Well, or, or you go through the whole budget, pass it, go through the whole budget process and plan for the potential growth for next year in evaluations and a potential decrease in spending or not putting money away in reserves or whatever, and then set your rate for next year. Or if not, I think, I don't know if we can set it that far ahead, but we can plan for that.
Plan for it and discuss it throughout the year where we're at, revenue-wise, growth-wise.
Is that service fund going down in the next three years?
Um, not exactly. Um, the debt payment will actually, one will pay off, but if that, when that one gets paid off, the TIF loans will come online, because right now we're not paying anything on those loan TIF loans. And two thousand and nineteen, they come on for start, start paying. So it's gonna kind of be a wash. The payment's not gonna go down substantial because those other bonds will be coming on payment.
So we're still looking at a dollar, a little over a dollar.
Right, it's, right, and that, you know...
I, I don't understand that because if you have assigned debt service to a particular payoff loan, and that loan pays off, then the funds collected for that debt service should go away. But you're saying we're gonna keep that money and pay...
Those funds that were, uh, assigned to that debt service will be begin paying off the debt service we issued in two thousand and eleven. When the highway project was coming on board and they were looking for money, they issued capital appreciation bonds, which you don't pay anything on until a certain point in time. And the only way, I guess, they could structure it at the time was to put off the payment on those till some of the other bonds were, were, uh, reduced. So your levy would cover those payments throughout that period.
But what I don't understand is that money was earmarked to pay off a specific debt. That debt's getting paid off. Typically, what gets done is an entity will do a no-cost bond increase to do more debt and use that same money to pay. We're not doing that, but yet we're gonna continue to use that collected...
We've already issued that debt.
Yeah.
That debt has already been issued.
The highway project.
The highway project, they issued that when they did, came up with money for the highway project.
Some of, some of those that we got in there is, if the TIF didn't cover it, I'm, I'm just...
It's not, it's the G O. bond that they issued.
Okay.
Um, five point five million to that, that they issued to come up with the city funds to make that seventy interchange work. But they couldn't pay, they couldn't increase their debt service at that time. So they pushed it off with capital appreciation bonds. And now, when the other debt year, one bond issue is gonna pay off, then you start paying on the two thousand and ten, eleven bond that you issued for I seventy.
Some of that, I think, my understanding is supposed to come out of general revenue. You could go to tax anything to pay.
That was the I D. A. bonds.
I D. A. bonds, so they're all getting mixed up.
Yeah, and these are all G O. bonds.
These are the ones that were issued for, with the downtown, I mean, these were the ones that are originally supposed to be for downtown, dude.
Yeah, yeah. Two thousand and eleven was downtown improvement bond money, correct?
They were bonds that were, that were approved in, I, I believe, like, two thousand and five or eight. I wasn't here for the whole period, so I'm not a hundred percent clear on all the dates. But they were approved and then they, instead of using them there, they were transportation bonds and they needed money.
The downtown improvements, yeah.
Yeah, and under the guise that the project would pay back.
Would it, would it be worthwhile as we start going into these budget conversations to do a review of the debt service, I mean, if any member's on the board?
That's part of the plan, yeah.
It's definitely be a refresher for the rest of us, too.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think, you know, clearly, and I think as, as far as it goes for the, um, for the levy, I mean, we can certainly have more of a presentation, uh, for the board in the future to address why the recommendation is that the levy stays at a level rate. Um, I, I have absolutely no problem with that. Usually, it's when you see an increase that has historically been when we would have to, you know, when you would see an actual levy increase, a penny, dime, that sort of thing. Uh, that's where a presentation would be. I can absolutely put something together. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem putting that information together. And as the debt service, I mean, yeah, I think a refresher for what everybody has already approved would be prudent.
A different question between Mr. Van and Coleman from school board perspective. Do you guys go through the same timing process and issues?
We do.
And how do you, how, how have you solved that problem or gotten around that problem to consider lowering the levy?
It's done basically through a, a process of different scenarios. Looking at last year's evaluation, the, the trend, and then plotting an anticipated evaluation for the coming year. And then running scenarios of, you know, within a, a deviation or variation of what, what that's projected to be. And then there's some, I'll say relatively minor adjustments that occur once the actual evaluation comes, comes forward. And, uh, I can tell you that as a school board, when, when they've just completed this process, you know, there was, with this year's evaluation and, and the levy rate that the school district carried from last year to this year, there was an intentional rollback of that levy rate. I believe it could have been rolled back nine cents. It was rolled back three cents with some very targeted efforts that the, the additional six cents, if you will, is targeted at some, some accelerated debt reduction. And, and not that they do it the right way and we're doing it the wrong way, that's not the point. That, that's a way that, that's, that's been adopted, that, that seems to work. It still offers some, some break in the levy rate. And also does a nice job, I think, of targeting some, some accelerated debt service repayments that, that, that we know the school district's gonna need to continue to incur going forward.
And that, I guess, I was, I was curious to see what your answer was based on sitting through some of the board meetings. To, I mean, if we're going, I would rather see us pay off debt faster than lower the rate. Not that, not that I like paying, you know, the taxes any more than the next guy, but I would rather see the debt service go away sooner with the, you know, six percent increase of valuation. If we were really gonna look at trimming the, you know, trimming the numbers across the board, I'd rather trim the debt versus the numbers, keep the numbers flat. That, that's just me. But I know there's a lot of other discussions to be dealt with back here, so... Do you have?
Yeah.
Okay, what do you...
Let's flip the book, I thought maybe you...
No.
Anyone have anything else then on this?
Well, if the value of our houses are going up, okay, that's gonna make our taxes go up. And then we turn around the six percent he's talking about. Is that gonna be added to the value of the house?
That's part of what's making it go up now.
And I know the school board, are we not talking about having, uh, put up a new high school on the other side?
At some point. Some point.
When do we start paying for that?
Hopefully, hopefully that's some years into the future.
Okay, I just don't want it all added to me next January.
All right.
So, so just to make things quick for me to get, the, the, the extra dollars that we're getting in because we're keeping it flat is going with a, a debt service, uh, on the inside of it?
No, so the, and that's, this is where a presentat, where, where I'm happy to do a presentation for the board on this. I had this conversation earlier this week with Alderman Baman. Uh, one of the issues that we tried, one of the reasons that we keep, keep it level is if you look at, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, sixteen, and then the forecast for seventeen, the general fund, and I'll just use the general fund for an example because it's kind of our gauge. It's, it's, uh, it's the best indicator. We've seen a very, uh, steady increase in the, in the overall revenues to that fund. Uh, one of the reasons that we've seen that increase, and, you know, a, as that's increasing, along with the size of the city and along with the population, we have to have, you know, all the things that it takes to run a city to, and include additional staff, uh, members for public safety, that sort of thing. So as we have this steady increase in the general fund revenues, if you look at court fines and forfeitures, you have a significant decrease, uh, to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars over the last, uh, three to four years. Um, that relates to traffic enforcement, that relates to Senate Bill Five being passed where they limit the court cases or the fines that we can associate with that. And so this, the change in valuation, I guess, uh, is, is really not turned out to be a windfall for the city where we're collecting all this money, um, based off of it. It's actually offset the decrease that we've seen in those other areas. Because we've had increases in sales tax, personal property tax, and real estate, increases in building permit fees, uh, tap fees. And, uh, the only consistent decrease that we've seen is in fines and forfeitures that are basically penalties that are assessed through municipal court. So this is, I guess it's kept us steady all that time. That's where the additional funds have come in. That's where the additional funds have gone for general fund operations.
Is that reduction due to just the legislative efforts that have lowered our, our fine limits?
I don't know.
Or is it to ticket, ticket, uh?
Yeah, part of it, yeah, part of it's enforcement, yeah, absolutely.
And part of it is those years that we were heavy, we had a dedicated traffic officer also.
Yeah, I don't think the numbers that I was seeing.
Well, I know the one year it was.
Were, were jumping that much. Because the, where that individual was picking up, it was likely was less than the rest of the force. It might be a part of the reason why we're seeing less now, because they got out of hand.
Well, I think.
And I know we can't make, can't make any numbers to them to try to tie to, because legislation even got into that. You can't set any quotas or anything like that, so that's something nobody can even begin to talk about, so, uh.
I think as long as we have a reasonable expectation of traffic enforcement, that doesn't equal tickets or revenue, it's, you know, thirty to sixty minutes on a shift. Um, just like, you know, we'd expect police officers to go up and check doors and check on businesses in their downtime, uh, same effort given towards traffic enforcement to enhance safety within the community.
And I did see in the, one of the reports where that contact, the checking businesses had gone up considerably in the last few months, so.
Yeah, it had.
For that, I applaud the officers for making sure our communities closed up and safe, so.
Yeah, we've seen across the board increases, uh, over the last probably quarter, um, in all those categories, business checks, enforcement action, they've done a great job.
I think the thing that's making it difficult this year is the timing of everything, and the fact that we haven't been through the budget, so we don't really know what you're talking about. Or normally, we would have already gone through all of these numbers and, and knew exactly what's going on. So I think that's what, and for me, that's what's making it difficult this year, is the fact that we haven't done the budgeting part.
We usually don't start our budget hearings until October, though.
Yeah, we, we have to, in the past.
That is one of the problems.
Set it prior to, we know what our budget is, it's kind of a, once you set this, you know what kind of money to anticipate coming in, then you have to budget to that end, but, uh.
I mean, I think it's really a fiscal year issue as well, um, you know, some agencies run from, you know, October one to September thirtieth, obviously, school districts, uh, June thirty, or July one to June thirtieth. There's different strategies that you can look at that way to, to better anticipate what funding you're going to have or what you need to set that levy. Because right now, we're really, essentially, what, what staff's doing is setting a levy rate based off of the forecasts that we've come up with in our staff level budget reviews. So we have to make some assumptions that don't allow you guys to weigh in that early. I think it needs to be obviously more of a priority, I want there to be clear communication to all the board members about what, what our funding is, what our expectations, uh, are for the following year for evaluations and, and revenues as well.
Seeing that, uh, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time.
Aye.
Arnold?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Baman?
No.
Henley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Five one mayor. Uh, bill B seventeen dash seventeen, ordinance two four one nine, second reading. Ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Green Valley, Missouri, where Justin, Larkin, second reading, ordinance two four one nine.
Mayor, I move accept bill B seventeen seventeen for second read, making it ordinance twenty four nineteen.
I have a motion, Alderman Arnold should approve bill B seventeen dash seventeen for second reading, making ordinance twenty four nineteen, drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Coleman, any discussion?
Just that this piece of property was discussed for, planning and zoning for what it was going to be zoned at, and, uh, what single-family residence for the back portion of the C one commercial on the front, front inch along B B. So that was approved at the, uh, planning and zoning meetings.
Any questions?
Seeing that, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time.
West?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Baman?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Six zero mayor. Bill B seventeen dash eighteen, second reading, ordinance two four two zero. Which is an ordinance impending section six three five of the code of ordinance in the city of Green Valley, Missouri pertaining to peddlers and solicitors permits and requirements. Ordinance two four two zero, second read.
I move that we accept bill number B seventeen eighteen and, uh, make it an ordinance number twenty four twenty.
I have a motion, Alderman Cotton should approve bill B seventeen dash eighteen for second reading, making ordinance twenty four twenty, drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Coleman, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, if you guys recall the previous meeting, when you approved the first reading, um, there was one change that we were going to make, uh, related to this ordinance, and it was specifically the, uh, appeal process, I'm going to let Teresa talk about the updates that we did for that.
So since our last meeting, um, Mr. Cook and I have reviewed the language, he has gone through and helped with the appeal process, so now that is in place. Um, and then just a quick reminder on the rest of the bill, we added some specific language around, um, the no-call list, around how the revocation process comes about. The chief has the power to do that, but the biggest change since the last meeting was just updating that language that we passed out.
Any other questions concerning that?
They're still going to have the cards though when they go around.
Correct.
And I would hope they would put it in the water bill so the people see it, because I, uh, a lot, I had shown it to several of my neighbors, and they said, good, we'll look for that. So that way, everybody will have a chance, because I don't think we'll fill the room with anybody coming.
Seeing that, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time.
Cotton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Baman?
Yes.
Six zero mayor. Resolution R seventeen dash thirty four is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an audit agreement with Trout, Beal, and Company for auditing services for the city of Green Valley, two thousand, okay, um, two thousand eighteen nineteen, or two thousand seventeen eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. So beginning two thousand seventeen.
I move that we accept, uh, resolution R seventeen dash thirty four as read.
Okay. I have a motion, Alderman West should approve resolution R seventeen dash thirty four, drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Baman, any discussion?
This is usually the thing.
Yes, yeah, and actually, I'm going to, um, have Kathy just real quickly recap the process that they went through and the information that's included in the packet.
All right, we, um, advertised for bid, and we sent copies of the bid packet to four audit firms that had requested to be on our bid list, and we got four back. And we evaluated those four, Alderman West was a member of the evaluation committee, and everyone pretty much came to the same conclusion that the auditors we're using now are doing a, a good job, we're happy with them. We only bid it out to see if we could get anything different or, you know, spec, special, and we all kind of felt like, based on the responses we got, we would stay with what we had.
Do we always go for a five-year contract?
Um, we do, there's no state statute that requires you to even bid out your audit, you could, some, some cities have the same auditor for four years, but I think if we had to try to get a new look at it every, so often to get some new, new puts, so.
Any questions? Seeing that, all fair please say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time.
Six zero mayor on that one. Um, resolution R seventeen dash thirty five is a resolution on the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, appointing Chief Jeff Grote, Groth, to the Green Valley, Missouri Tax Increment Financing Commission for a four-year term.
I move that we accept bill R seventeen dash thirty five as read.
I have a motion, Alderman West should approve resolution R seventeen dash thirty five, drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Baman, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, a position specifically that C J C holds on the TIF mission, uh, Chief Groth will be taking, uh, Chief Westerman's spot as he has retired.
I will abstain, this is a direct supervisor for me currently.
Anyone else have it?
All of the fair please say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time.
Six zero mayor.
Five and you're a one stain.
I'm sorry, five zero.
I say all of the stains.
Five, veil change. That's all, mayor.
Okay, next up, city affairs report.
City affairs report, your honor, thank you.
Next up, city minister of staff report.
Um, yeah, we will start with, uh, Mr. Murphy. Uh, Mayor and Board, I just have two things, uh, the first one, just wanted to remind you guys about our annual household hazardous waste event where we partner with Jackson County. Uh, it'll be October seventh, and we've got more flyers, I think, back on the table there. But it's an eight AM to noon event, and it's an opportunity for, uh, Green Valley residents to be able to get rid of those household hazardous waste items, you know, like, uh, paint, lawn and garden chemicals, that type of thing. Uh, it'll be on Old Forty Highway at the Jackson County facility, that's worked out pretty well the last couple of years, so. Um, I know Sarah's, get stuff out on Facebook, Twitter, and it's been on a lot of the calendars that have been going out, but, uh, feel free to take some flyers and pass the word on. Um, the other thing that I had, um, a few meetings ago, Alderman and Arnold had asked, and we were talking about the landlord licensing, to try and get an idea of where we were at, um, as far as rental versus homeowner occupied. Uh, so Ms. Bowden had run, uh, run through our N code system, and as far as residential accounts go, we've got five thousand one hundred and sixty-six. And out of those, uh, fourteen hundred and seventy-three show up as, uh, rental units. And the way we're coming up with that, those are the ones that have come in and actually paid that rental deposit. And it looks like we do have a lot of the information on the landlords, um, either in, in code or, um, some of the older ones, um, on paper. But that comes out to be around twenty-eight percent, um, rental. So we tried to look at some different things, and I'm sure there's a lot of information out there, but I did find, find one from, uh, the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, and it was for the Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas, um, areas issued in, uh, July of two thousand thirteen. And what they came out with was renter occupied units, uh, totaled twenty-nine point two percent. Um, and then another one, the two thousand and ten census, um, it showed roughly the same thing for the, it didn't break it down to the area, but just looking at Midwest, it was right in that, um, you know, just shy of thirty percent range. So I don't, you know, I don't know how far we want to go into that, but it, it is the first time we've really had a better idea, I guess, on the actual percentage of renter to owner occupied dwellings.
I know that number was about three percent over, what, three or four percent over the last time, we came close to finding out how many we had there.
Yeah, and it, it does look like, I mean, it has gone up everywhere, not just here, that's kind of been the trend, um.
My, my concern still is that that number's still not correct, that we still have a significant number more out there of rental property, and shy of having some process of people registering rental property, we never want enough. And I know the school district feels it, we tend, we tend to get more economically challenged people if they're not with the volume of rental property that we have. And, uh, so it's one of those things that, having a good number, we might be able to set a policy on future development and growth in our community as to how much multifamily type of development we want to see. I know we already have a significant amount of property in town that's already zoned for multifamily that just hasn't been developed yet, and that needs to be considered as well into that number for us moving forward, you know, because when you're looking at a quarter of your people that live in your community, you could just pull up stakes and leave.
Yeah, one thing I would say, though, with the increase happening, we have, it hasn't been so much with the, like, the duplexes and the fourplexes, we haven't built a ton of those, a lot of it's coming just with single-family homes, that's becoming a lot more popular.
That's, that's a concern that I've heard from people who own their homes, is that too much of the single-family dwellings are becoming rental property, and they aren't as well taken care of by the landlord or the, or the tenants. And, uh, it, it brings a, an economic challenge to those people to keep the value of their property where it should be, you know, where they would like to have it stay. Which in turn, it, it causes a downturn, it affects the school board, it affects us, it affects everybody, because of the downturn and assessed evaluations. So that's why it's something that, I know Kansas City has their ordinance to, to do, and they just recently passed a deal, I expect they passed a deal that requires landlords to register not only by their name and contact information, because a lot of them have been doing it under L S D.
Well, Kansas City just, they just pulled it off, it's not going to be voted on now this year. They were going through with a new, when we talked about this the last time, there was a story running that they were, um, going to take a vote on doing more with their registering, and they backed off on that, I don't know what.
That was more toward their home inspections, they still have their rental registration program, it's been.
And so, yeah, in talking to Kathy, I mean, some of the things that we have out there, there are different ways to do it, there's like a, you know, you can be a landlord, and we've got your commission, and the tenant comes in and pays their deposit. And there's also, correct me if I'm wrong here, Kathy, but if you're a landlord, you could also do kind of a, like a master, um, deposit, and there's fees for that. But it sounds like we have the majority of, uh.
We have the majority of the information, but the problem with it is that the landlords change pretty quickly on some of the properties, and a lot of them are out of state, so.
Right, and that implies, you know, a whole other, other part of the whole issue, why we need to know who's doing what in our community, because this is an underground business, the people are buying property and renting it out for, to make money. So it's a business that we aren't controlling by any means, they don't have to buy a city license to operate the business, just like any other business we have in, in the community. I'm not advocating a charging a fee for them registering, but there, there should be some type of penalty if they don't register, uh, to, to keep us informed about it. It, it also goes into where people leave trash, they leave, don't pay water bills, whatever, and they leave the city on the hook for these type of things, uh, cleaning up the lot or mowing the grass or whatever. And then, you know, now we got to try and chase down the landlord, and do we, do we have a, a contact person to even get restitution for some of these expenses? And, and I think it's just too proactive on our part to have registration assistance for the landlords.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess on, from staff's end, I think this was one of the things that was asked for, and then the other one was seeing kind of what the capability was with N code to be able to.
Right.
To track that type of thing, and it looks like we have that capability, it would just be putting something in place that, that, you know, that has to be updated almost every year when it changes, um, that, I mean, if that's something that the board wants us to go forward with, then I think. Basically, what we found out was we have, we can store that information and have it in there.
So if we have a main sort, then we should, should consider instituting the, the policy that we have our lenders, our landlord register with, so we can know exactly who does and is doing business in our community. So, we didn't know exactly who does and is doing business in our community.
So, are you going to tax them for having rented property?
No, they're already taxed when they own the property. They pay taxes for anybody else. I mean, it's, it's, it's more of just a annoying habit and avenue to, to deal with them when there's an issue with the property that's, that's not being taken care of. Grass, windows broken, you know, whatever, uh, and not having to spend a lot of time with staff, writing them down to find who owns it.
You only had one half on my street that rented property.
Right, so, and if we have a way to, to monitor it, I think it, you know, with twenty-eight percent of our community being rental property, I think we, you know, we might have, that number could be thirty-eight percent.
And that's, yeah...
There's no way of really knowing that, whether we don't have them registered.
So, that's the trick, is finding out, you know, who the ones are, um...
I'm assuming that would just go through the registration process, but you, with, uh, the board, the board probably needs to give staff clear direction or, you know, some sort of further discussion, workshop, whatever, because there's a lot that will go into a renter's policy. And this is, um, the type of thing that we put it on the agenda, or it even gets passed. You, you're going to get a lot of pressure from landlords after the fact, so the board needs to make sure that they, um, have a clear expectation of what this program's going to be, that we convey that as well.
So, I think that when we came the last time, I think the information that we had, uh, was geared more towards the inspection.
Right, which was just, I thought, not something I was looking at.
And that's one that, I mean, that's one of the reasons...
That would give these landlords an arm and shoulder.
Um, so, I mean, are you, are you wanting us to come back with more of just what we could implement as far as just a, a registration process? Just to, basically, be able to track landlords?
Is that something to start with, P and D?
Uh, I don't know if that's a...
Do you listen?
How much is that going to cost the city?
Just depends on how, you know, how detailed we have to get. I mean, there's obviously, you know, staff resources that are going to be dedicated to it. So, there will be a cost, some costs associated with it. I mean, there's already been costs associated, just research done so far. But if it's a, a project or a program that we, you know, continually maintain, follow up on, you know, it's, it's hard to quantify right now how much that would be, if there would be additional costs.
I have a question. I, I know you brought this up as a comment, but didn't we table this at one point? I mean, as far as...
I think that was on the, doing the inspection side of it. And I don't, it didn't come up as an ordinance or anything. It was just a new business kind of thing, just a quota.
No, okay. I'm confused sometimes, so, I'm confused at times, too. You just, I just think it would be prudent of us to know just exactly what's going on in our community. I, you know, whether the, uh, something that's completed at the time, when someone comes in to turn on the water bill and we collect that landlord information at that time, so that we, uh, clearly know that it's rental.
Well, and that's the idea. I mean, that's, and that sort of rental deposit comes in. If you're not the owner, then there's supposed to be a deposit.
And then it rolls back to whether or not the individual's going to be honest to say they are renting or not, so they don't want to have to pay that deposit.
Well, I thought you paid it, but I thought it was, you get it fast and different time.
Rentals don't get a return until they move out.
Probably the homeowners can request a return.
Five years? Two years.
Two years, okay.
So, we'll just come up with, it just, it sounds like...
Yeah, I think...
What I'm hearing is that just a standard registration program.
Yes, government line.
Kind of a way to engage, um, tenants and landlords to be able to sign up for that, uh, and then, you know, it morphs into whatever it becomes.
Bring, I would bring a draft to back off of previous business. And with that, you know, it'd be some policy with requiring landlords to have a Grand Valley Business License. I mean, what's a twenty-five bucks?
I mean... What now?
Requiring the landlord to have a Grand Valley Business License, which is a lot for twenty-five dollars, so...
I don't know if I really want to require that. I, I would, I would see it on the back end, that if somebody's not registering the property, that there'd be something there that would promote them to, to, uh, do registration. Not, because twenty-five dollars, I know it's a small amount, but just any time they have to pay something, they just kind of hedge against it. I know in Kansas City, each month you go by, it grows...
Yeah, I mean, there'd be some sort of penalty clause in there, too.
You go eight months past the, past the registration date, I use, you know, you...
It'd be a penalty clause, just like, compared to this, but, just like licensing your dog. If you don't have your dog, your dog or cat licensed by, what, the first of February, start paying the penalty.
Yeah, I could see the, I, I think it will get more pushback from landlords if we require them to do the business license. But on the other end of the spectrum, the reason that we're kind of sticking the city's nose in their business is because they are doing business.
Yeah, I mean, should they have, should they have a business license if they're doing business now?
I was going to say, technically, they should have it, because...
They should have a business license, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, that wasn't my intent at the beginning. I just want to make sure we have a good working relationship and a way to contact them to keep their property up, to stand to be like a...
I mean, if somebody has twenty-five rental homes in Green Valley, they shouldn't balk at the twenty-five dollar business license, I wouldn't think.
I don't think so.
You would think that they were getting more than their money worth. I wouldn't say free cash, this overall, you know, twenty-five bucks for their entire business license.
All right, that was all. All right. All right, uh, just two things that I had. As I mentioned earlier, twenty eighteen proposed budget, um, is out. Uh, if you didn't grab yours off the table, uh, in the binder, make sure that you get that. We need to, uh, look at budget workshops, um, and the dates that we're going to have those workshops. So, uh, we typically will have something in the beginning or the second week of October. The idea with the budget is to have a first read of, uh, budget ordinance on November thirteenth. So, if we work backwards from there, uh, and depending on how many workshops the board wants to have, um, I, it, it usually works better to have it on a night completely separate from the board meeting. That way, we're not, um, up against a time crunch to get through something for the board meeting to start. We've had them where they start at six o'clock, and then we have a board meeting at seven, and we're limited on what, what departments we can get through. Um, are there any days that work better, uh, for the board, for each of you that, you know, or days that we need to stay away from? Where, you know, every Tuesday I'm not available, or Thursday, or whatever the case may be. Is there a, a day that we should stay away from? I'll start with you, Dale. Any specific day of the week that's bad?
Um, not at this point.
Nancy?
I'm not sure right now.
Thursdays, every other Thursday will always be an issue for Chris.
Mayor?
I have to depend on softball schedule, but I think she takes...
Bob?
I don't think October will be an issue.
Okay.
So, for what I'm looking at.
Yolanda? Chris?
Unfortunately, I will have a few conflicts during, during, most of October, but, sure.
Okay, so...
Pick some dates out. I'll do my best to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll send, um, a few dates out, uh, and try to get a poll. Most likely do it through the, the doodle poll that we, uh, have used in the past. It's the best way to get consensus of the whole board. I'll probably look at doing, um, a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday night, so, uh, I will have that out to the board by the end of the week. And then the only other thing that I wanted to say is October fourteenth, uh, don't forget, we have the Truman Heartland Toast to our towns. Uh, we'll be honoring Jim Cook as our Citizen of the Year. Uh, both, both tables are, are filled up, um, but we filled in, uh, with staff. We fill vacancies, so I just want to, if you're interested in going and you're not on this list, let me know. So far, I've got Mayor plus one, uh, Bob plus one, Yolanda plus one, Nancy, and then, um, we've extended invitation to State Rep. Jeanne Lauer. She's accepted. Uh, so if you're interested in going and you did not hear your name, let me know, um, because I, I'm sure I can make room for you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Next up, the Board of Alderman reports and comments. Alderman Arnold?
Uh, wanted to congrats like those with the, uh, fair this year. I had just one bad issue with, and they, uh, we had a bit of vandalism, I guess, Friday night for a, popped a tent unit and two tables were destroyed. And I don't know what spirit could do better to that. And I'm thinking these were juveniles, so maybe they shouldn't have been out at two o'clock in the morning.
You're kidding.
Well, I don't know. At two o'clock in the morning when these, this occurred approximately, so, um, it's something to look at for the future. Get anybody else outside of the ETS here doing it, whatever, maybe. I bet it's self-destructive. Wouldn't help itself to anyone, but, what can you do? Otherwise, it was a good affair.
Almer Totting?
Well, I will go on. I'd like to say thank you to the policeman's night out, and I'll tell you one reason why. Uh, I had two little girls that I didn't know were standing there, and I, I have a bad habit of, uh, stretching my arm when I'm beating the red dot and the house goes down. Uh, this little girl was behind me, and she was trying, and he told me to go ahead and do it for her, uh, his, her. But if he, if the police department could have heard the little girl later, when I was over hitting the hot dog, say she got to do that and have much fun, the police officer was smiling, it was really worth it. And I enjoyed that immensely. But, uh, I'm, and I'm proud to say on my street, we've got two houses that are being sold. They're higher money than what they originally asked for. They were, they got into a bidding war. But I got two more coming up on another street, so I gotta watch it. Thank you.
Almer Coleman?
I have to report on this, lady.
Almer Headley?
Just a reminder, uh, Mike tossed out some flyers on our Alderman's desk. The, uh, Legacy Plaza Tribute, uh, basically the inception of the...
Base one?
Base one, uh, is going to kick off October third at four PM. And there'll be, uh, a number of events going on. The, the officials that provide music with a number of band members and basically Kristen, uh, Kristen and Trina. So, if you need any other, any other flyers, I think Mike, you probably have a handful.
Yeah, between Sarah and I, we can come up with a bunch of them.
Almer West?
Nothing at this time, there.
Almer Bannan?
Nothing to report, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, next up, Mayor's report. Uh, a couple of things. Uh, just in case you're hearing, Ken, I don't know what more we found out about that fence on Friday afterwards, but I know the, uh, just kind of give everyone a heads up in case you hear. Uh, we have an individual who has, they've erected a fence that doesn't meet code. It's held up with its T-posts and basically hog panels, right? Like the metal, heavier than chicken, heavier than chicken wire, but not, you know... Well, they're, I mean, they sent us, is that today? They sent us like four days ago.
That was last week.
Well, no, they, they, they sent us another email today, or last night.
Yeah, there was, either last night or this morning.
Yeah, well, the issue is, they're going to be, I mean, they have requested that we, well, long story short, they have, they have a child with autism that lives at the house. Uh, they rent the, they rent the house. The landlord wouldn't let them put up a permanent fence. So, they put up a dis...
Structure is dead.
Because the child has a tendency to, to run off. So, it doesn't meet code because it's, of the way it was constructed. So, we, uh, you know, posted it, told them they have, you know, there are ten days to remove it. Well, they wanted us to, you know, they said it was okay because they had a child with a disability.
And the neighbors done the same thing.
And the neighbors have done the same thing, yeah. So, I don't know, I'm still, I mean, we're working with them, trying to...
It sounded like the landlord didn't even look at them doing anything.
So, they've sent a notice to ask a question that we look at our code to add a section about basically allowing variances for individuals with disabilities, so...
And we told them that the process for that is to go through, easy with the various process.
But instead of doing that, I think they want us to...
They don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Why don't they get one of those chip things that they can put on the child, so they can find him, if he does?
Well, I think one of the issues is they're close to, they're close to a pond, too, and they're worried about the child getting to the pond. Because there has been some studies done that, you know, children with autism are attracted to the body of the water and will, you know, go towards them. So, I think that's one of, one of their fears, is, is the pond there and him, and he being attracted to the water. So, just let you know, I mean, we're, you know, we're working with the budget. You might hear something from someone about adding that clause. I don't know, Jim, if that's really even, because I don't know how you would put that clause even in there. I hate to say it, but there would probably be people that would probably try to abuse that clause. I could see if they did not have a disability, and we're trying to get variance for special things, so, I don't know.
Well, that's what that process is for. I mean, it, five years ago, probably, there was one, they lived in a split little house.
Yeah, we got that one, Nancy, that student over there on Broadway, remember them? Yeah.
I mean, the process.
They ended up going through the process and, yeah. I think part of it is, I don't think they plan on living there very long, and they don't really want to put the two fifty dollars out for the variance fee. And as we learned last time, we just can't really waive that variance fee either, so...
It's a slippery slope, Mayor. It's, it's like that no good deed goes unpunished. It's once, once that domino falls, then you're going to have floodgates are open. And, uh, disability is one thing, but complying with the code on fences and, uh, you're going to have everybody saying, well, Jeff didn't have to do it, why do I have to do it?
Can I ask a dumb question? Why the devil did they move near a pond when they knew they had problems?
I think they might have adopted the child, I think. I don't, I don't know the whole story, but the bits and pieces I was getting was that, that they haven't always had this child. I think maybe they adopted him. So, this is something apparently new.
Where's the house located?
It's just north of the pond next to Roy's. I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
There's the building, there's a pond to the east, just north of that.
So, I just want to inform in case they reach out, because they might be reaching out to some of you about that, too.
So, has it been structured enough to contain the child or not everything?
I don't know. I don't think it's safe. I don't, I don't, I think that's one of the reasons we have the process and the codes in place is I don't know that the fence is suitable or safe for, you know, restraining...
How old is the child?
Uh, I, I saw in the pictures, probably three, four years old, older. I just saw the pictures.
Yeah, I know.
I want to say eight is what they're...
Okay, well, definitely, it's not, you know, it's just a hogwire fence with, with T-posts. I mean, that's part of the problem. That's the bigger problem that, that I have with it.
Yeah, I see.
Outside of the, the permitting issue is, it doesn't appear to be safe.
It's not enough to do what they want it to do. Well, anytime you have those T-posts on the ground, like, you know, there in Drysville or what, those things get loose.
Uh, the other thing I had, I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody who had a, a part in the fair. I know the city staff, you know, did a lot, volunteers, you know. Uh, the other thing I had, I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody who had a, a, a parking affair, I know the city staff, you know, did a lot, volunteers, you know, Chris did a lot with the parade, that going, and, uh, it's hard to calculate numbers, but I do know that, uh, the carnival had the best carnival they've ever had in Grand Valley, so they had more people go through there than they've ever had, and I think, you know, our vendors were up, and all the vendors were, seemed to have the turnout we had, so, and I don't know, I think partnership with the fair garden, I think it was up also, so, overall, I think it turns us up, and of course, the weather, I think, helped out a ton. I never got, how was, how was the bingo, I never got to talk to you guys about?
We haven't got a final vote yet.
Yeah, did it seem like it was...
Our Saturday night was good, or Saturday afternoon.
Saturday during that parade time?
About that one.
Yeah, so, I don't know what, and I don't know what, we haven't talked about parade time yet, so I don't know what's gonna happen next year.
I received a number of concerns about the heat parade.
Well, I only had one concern, the gentleman had to go to his funeral for a family member and couldn't get out.
Yeah, and, and we've looked at, we kinda talked, I think what we need to do next year, like we do when we, uh, like, like we did to notify people of the parking, is, you know, I mean, we, we, we get it out, you know, we send it to water bills, we put it on Facebook, we do all that, but I think in the neighborhoods that get closed in, maybe we need to go through and do door hangers.
Yeah.
Like we've done on other things, just say, hey, expect to be blocked in from this time to this time on, on this date, so, 'cause I know what, what, you know, we're calling it the community parade now, so I think it's, you know, I think from now on, they're gonna be combined, school and all that, so it is gonna be a larger parade, and people will get some of those trees blocked in, locked in there a little bit, a little bit longer periods of time, so, that's one of the things we put down on our list for next year, so, is to do door hangers. Uh, that's all I have, do you have any, any other sections, sections, though?
Sure.
All right, if no one has anything else, Willard?